Praise you. Praise you that you have answered this ancient prayer. Praise you, Emmanuel, that you have come. Come to be with us as God taking on our flesh, our human nature. Truly with us. Thank you. We rejoice. We rejoice that you left the palaces of heaven and came to a barn. We rejoice that you left the palaces of heaven and have come to our hearts to live there. Praise you. Praise you. We rejoice. And at the same time, our hearts are heavy as we see so much of the world still today covered in darkness. Thank you for the light that you have shed that as many as half of our world's population claim your name, whatever that may mean. But that means that half many do not even know your name. Oh, come, Emmanuel. Come and let your light and your joy and your glory shine across the world. In your name we pray. Amen. Someone has asked if there is a textbook that I can recommend that somehow covers what I've been teaching. Well, I haven't written it yet. I've got to stop teaching FAS Bible Studies, so I've got time to do it. No, I don't know. There are, of course, many commentaries. And I should say that there is an older book by an author named Mary Douglas entitled "Holiness." And she works largely from Leviticus. It's fairly technical, not terribly so, but that would be one that is a widely used and well-known. Yes?
There's a DVD series. It's, I forgot how long it is, but Chuck Missler and he and his co-hosts do this. It's not as good as this, but it's good.
A DVD series by Chuck Missler?
Yeah.
Okay. In many ways, this verse with which we closed last time is, in my mind, the key verse of the book. Keep my commands and follow them. I am the Lord. Do not profane my holy name, for I must be acknowledged as holy by the Israelites. I am the Lord, who made you holy and who brought you out of Egypt to be your God. I am the Lord. Three times. I am Yahweh. I am Yahweh. I am Yahweh. Because I am this person, because I am of this nature, then certain things follow. And one of them is he intends for us to be holy, to share his character. Last time, we began to look at holiness pictured, and we saw in chapters 21 and 22 the priesthood as the picture of God's holiness. Tonight, we look at worship, chapters 23, 24, and 25. In those three chapters, there are four topics addressed. The first one is the festivals throughout the year, chapter 23. Then, chapter 24 begins with regulation regulations for the lamps and the table in the holy place of the tabernacle and ultimately the temple. And we'll want to talk about that. What's going on there? In a sense, the answer is, I don't know. But it invites us to think about the possibilities, what it's doing there. And then following that, clarifying the punishment for blaspheming God and for harming another human, I should add, or animal. And I ask you in the study guide to think about possible connection between blaspheming the name and taking a life. And finally, in chapter 25, the sabbatical and jubilee years. So in these four topics, we're seeing again holiness, personal, corporate, being illustrated in life as in particular worship. The festivals begin with the Sabbath. Now, it's fascinating to me that in the Old Testament, Sabbath is the following circumcision. Sabbath and circumcision are the marks of being a member of the covenant. They go together, and Sabbath occurs again and again. In Exodus, we begin... Excuse me. We end the directions for the tabernacle with Sabbath regulations. Then after the golden calf, the tragedy of the broken covenant, when they begin to report how they did go ahead and do it God's way, it begins with Sabbath. And throughout the Old Testament, Sabbath again and again and again shows up. Now, it's fascinating then that in the New Testament, the early Christians are very, very ambiguous in their attitude toward the Sabbath as they are ambiguous toward circumcision. In both cases, Jews are saying, "How do you know you're saved if the men are circumcised and you all keep the Sabbath? That's how you know you're saved." And the Christians are forced to say, "No. No, that's not how you know." In fact, if that's what you're depending on, you're lost. Salvation is dependent on faith in Jesus Christ. And so Paul says in Colossians, "Don't let anybody judge you in regard to Sabbaths or new moons." So it's fascinating. And it seems to me that, as always, when we come to the New Testament, we've got to say, "What was the principle involved there?" And how can we then translate that principle into heart religion? We don't sacrifice sheep anymore. How does that translate into my life of sacrifice? We don't circumcise for religious reasons anymore. How does that translate into being a marked person for God? Circumcised heart. In the same way, Sabbath, it seems to me, is part of that whole thing. How do I save myself? This has been especially true for males, but it's becoming more and more true for females as well. Oh! That's how I save myself. The work of my hands. And again, idolatry? Over and over again, the prophets will say, "You worship the work of your hands." So the question is, how do I, as a Christian, remind myself that I am who I am by the grace of God? So I think that it's very important for us to have a day when we quit work and remind ourselves where our hope lies. Does that mean that as... I'm not sure what this machine is doing here. Does that mean that we don't read the funny papers on Sunday? Does that mean we don't play baseball? All of those have got to be open questions. But the issue is, what's the principle? So the whole thing begins with Sabbath. Then, as I indicate here, this passage doesn't mention the new moon, the worship service the first day of the month. But there are many other passages, at least a dozen, in the Old Testament, and I've given you three here. Numbers 29:6, Psalm 81:3, and Ezra 3:5 that talk about this worship. Once again, beginning the month, I stop work, remind myself, who is it that supplies my needs? Is it I with the work of my hands? No. It's God, the gracious and loving God. So far as we know, the Hebrews are the only people in the ancient world who had a seven-day week. There are some indications in Mesopotamia that they had a 10-day cycle. They didn't have a Sabbath. And again, as far as we can tell, Sabbath is unique to the Hebrews. You must stop work on this day and worship me. But there it is. God is building into the world this cycle of sevens. And you begin with the idea... Excuse me. For the Jews, you conclude the week by stopping work and worshiping. Then there is Passover. Passover occurs at the beginning of the barley harvest. Now, all the way through here, I'm going to say March, April, June, July, September, October. The Hebrews had a lunar calendar. The months were 28 days on the moon's cycle. That means that every third year, you add a 13th month. And every 19th year, you add a 14th month to get the sun and the moon back in sync again. So this is why these festivals move a little bit. So the Passover is on the 14th day of the first month of the harvest season. As I say, this is the barley harvest. This is followed then by the week of unleavened bread. And in the middle of that week, on the 16th, there is the feast of first fruits that is mentioned here. You bring a sheaf of that barley. And you say, "At the beginning of harvest, thank you for the harvest that's going to follow. All of this is a gift from you. It comes from you." So Passover, unleavened bread, and the feast of first fruits are all there in a week's time. Passover, of course, is remembering what God did in Egypt. Some say, "This is the Jewish Independence Day." Well, not really. It's really Jewish resurrection day. Passover remembers not that they escaped from Egypt, but that they escaped death. The death angel has passed over us. So here at the beginning of harvest, the beginning of the period of fertility, we remember. Paganism, the New Year festival is the attempt to make sure that chaos will not succeed this year. It begins with a rehearsal of the myth, often acted out, where the chief god, whoever it happens to be by this time, defeats the chaos monster and out of her body brings the earth. So you are attempting to plug into this continual victory over chaos and to plug it into time. The Hebrews are not doing anything of that sort. They're remembering something that happened once for all that changed their identity forever. They're not trying to get out of space and time. They're remembering what God did in space and time. I hear people saying, "Oh, remember in Genesis 1, God defeated chaos." And I shrivel up inside. That's myth. That's myth. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. He didn't start out with chaos. Now, people can say, "Well, and the earth was without form and void." Basically, what that means is, "And the earth was empty." It wasn't chaos. Well, you can see that's a hot button for me. Seven weeks later, the so-called Feast of Weeks, Pentecost. This is the beginning of the wheat harvest about the end of May, the beginning of June. Over the years, as the Hebrew society became more urban, they observed that Passover is the beginning of the year. And three months later, they were at Sinai. And so over the years, Pentecost came to be the celebration of the giving of the Torah at Sinai. Now, do you think it's an accident? You think that's an accident? I don't. Again, the Hebrews are remembering remembering something God has done, done in time and space that has changed them forever. Then comes the Feast of Trumpets. This is one day, and it is the New Year festival for the Sabbath calendar. The Sabbath calendar, and that's what Rosh Hashanah means, head of the year. Rosh is head, and Hashanah is the year, the head of the year. So this is the Sabbath year sometime around the middle of September, toward the end of September. This is one day. And it's connected to the end of the harvest. You've had the barley. You've had the wheat. You've had the figs. You've had the olives. And now, finally, you're going to have the grape harvest. This is the beginning of the grape harvest. 10 days after Rosh Hashanah is the Day of Atonement. Rosh Hashanah is on the first day of the seventh month. Day of Atonement is on the 10th day of the seventh month. And the feast of tabernacles, the feast of shelters, or as they said it in our country church, the feast of booze. I always wondered, why did the Hebrews have a feast of booze? But it is... They are living for a week. Again, this is in the early days, but to some degree in later days as well. They live in shacks. They live in lean-tos. And the purpose here is to remind them of the wilderness. So you've got Passover, leaving Egypt. You've got Pentecost, the giving of the Torah. And then you have tabernacles, which is the wilderness. Day of Atonement, as we talked earlier, is a day to afflict themselves a day to weep for the sins of the previous year, especially the unintentional sins. But the pagans are weeping. The pagans are crying because the vegetation God is dying. And you want to give him a good funeral because if you don't, he might not come back next spring. What are the Hebrews weeping over? Their sins. So from trumpets on Rosh Hashanah to the Day of Atonement to the feast of tabernacles, these are called by the Jews today, the high holy days. What is life with God? Life with God is, first of all, to remember and give thanks for what he's done for you in time and space. Jesus Christ was not crucified in Never-Neverland. He's not crucified over and over again. He was crucified once for all in time and space at a certain spot on this planet in a certain year. Time and space are what matters to God, not Never-Neverland, not the invisible realm. The visible realm is what matters to God. Then there are, in modern Judaism, two other festivals that have come in. One is Hanukkah. And that is... The word means the dedication. And it refers to the rededication of the temple after the Syrian king, Antiochus IV, had sacrificed a pig on the altar in 168 AD... Oh, excuse me, BC. And in 165, the Jews were able to throw the Syrians out, and they rededicated the temple in December. And it's a period of eight days, which they light another candle each day. That's not biblical. The other one is here in the winter. This is Purim. Purim celebrates Esther. Remember that the Persians, under Haman, cast lots to decide what day they were going to slaughter all the Jews. And instead, the Jews cast lots to decide when they were going to slaughter their enemies among the Persians. And this is remembered typically in March or perhaps February. One of the things to remember there are what are called Haman's hats. Little pastries that are three-cornered. You fold over the three corners, and those are Haman's hats. It's also a time in the dead of winter for celebration. It's the closest that the Jews... It's the closest that the Jews would have to our Thanksgiving. They are giving thanks for their continued existence despite Persians and Christians trying to get rid of them. So in the cultural context, these are occurring at key points in the agricultural year. The beginning of the barley harvest, the beginning of the wheat harvest, and finally, the end in the completion of the grape harvest. And of course, for the pagans, this was not only a time of weeping, it was also a time of sexual orgies as they were enjoying the new wine. And again, they are making love, not war. For the Hebrews, they're living in these shacks, leafy bowers, some call them, and remembering, "God took care of us." This would be especially significant if it were a bad harvest. "God took care of us for 40 years in the wilderness. I guess He can take care of us through this coming winter." So the pagans, with their festivals, are attempting to ensure the continuation of the life cycle by plugging into the invisible world where death is constantly defeated, but death constantly defeats life, where people are born and grow up and die, where the sun goes south every year, but comes back north every year. The Hebrews are remembering, remembering what God has done in their unique history. And so these are times of gratitude. "Thank you, God, for what you have done for us across the years, across the centuries. Thank you for the ways in which you've kept your promise when we have broken ours." They're a time of submission, when, as I said, and I'll say again before we're done tonight, when they quit work and submit themselves to God for His provision. And a time of dedication, when they bring their tithes, when they bring their offerings, when they say, "God, we're Your people. We belong to You." So the holy life is a life of remembering. It's a life of gratitude. It's a life of submission. It's a life of dedication. And these feasts, these festivals, these times of rejoicing are times to nail all that down in very public and visible ways. So that's chapter 23. Chapter 24, what's going on here with the lamp, the lampstand, and the table? And not the incense altar. You're not talking about the high altar outside. You're not talking about the labor outside. You're talking about these two things. When you read the text, this is a Bible study, it might be a good idea to open your Bibles. When you read the text, you notice something that is repeated. "Command the Israelites to bring you clear oil of pressed olives for the light, so that the lamps may be kept burning continually. Aaron is to tend the lamps before the Lord from morning till evening, continually. This is to be a lasting ordinance for generations to come. The lamps on the pure gold lampstand before the Lord must be tended..." What's the word?
Continually.
Continually. As I've said to you many times, repetition typically signals emphasis. God's trying to make a point. "The light is to be kept burning continually at night." It doesn't say anything about daytime here, and you can find other places where it looks like they were kept burning 24 hours. But the point here is, at night, every night, all night, that lamp is to be burning. Now, let me ask you, what do you think the point is? Illustrating holiness. What do you think the point is? Keep the light burning, huh? Keep the light burning in your life when the darkness is around us. Keep the light burning. What do I have to do? What do you have to do to keep the light from dwindling down, from fading? What do I need to do to keep my relationship with the Lord vital and alive? Then, when we look at the bread, take the finest flour, bake 12 loaves of bread, arrange them in two stacks, six in each stack, on the table of pure gold before the Lord. By each stack, put some pure incense as a memorial portion to represent the bread, to be a food offering presented to the Lord. This bread is to be set out regularly, Sabbath after Sabbath, on behalf of the Israelites, as a lasting covenant. It belongs to Aaron and his sons, who are to eat it in the sanctuary area because it is a most holy part of their perpetual share of the food offerings presented to God." Perpetual share. So perhaps the point here is perseverance and consistency. These activities to be carried out every week, every day, it's the perpetual share for these holy persons. It is bread that the Israelites offer and bread that the Israelite priests consume. Is anybody being fed out of your life? Now what about the rest of chapter 24? Yes, I said 23 here, it's 24. A blasphemer. We've talked about this before. Our lives are to constantly hallow His name. Our lives are constantly to demonstrate there is none like Him in character, in nature, in work. "Hallowed be Thy name." We have overlaid holy so much with certain kinds of behaviors, and that's not wrong. But God's holiness is, as I've tried to say to you 100 times during these weeks, His otherness. He is absolutely other than anything we can know or imagine. And that then translates into not only His power, but His purity. And our lives, our lives are intended to demonstrate that. This guy has taken God's name, and again, you cannot separate His character. I'm not sure what's happening here. Hang on to my coat here. And for the Hebrews, you cannot neatly separate those. You cannot say that Elohim or Yahweh have nothing to do with His character. So if you use His name in a way that makes Him appear empty and worthless, you've said something about His reputation and His character. But there are many more ways of profaning His name than just using His label in a casual oath. And it seems to me that's one of the main teaching steps that needs to take place in regard to the Third Commandment. "You shall not take the name of the Lord in vain. You shall not unhallow His name with all that that means." And how's that connected to life? A human life for a human life. I think life is the greatest creation of the Holy One. And so, to treat life lightly is to treat the life giver lightly. They go together. And I find it very interesting that if you take an animal's life, you have to give restitution for it. That's interesting. And then the third thing that emerges here is an eye for an eye, a tooth for a tooth. As I said in the background for this study guide, today, the idea of equal retribution is often looked down on. Oh my goodness, what a barbaric way of thinking. But in ancient times, what this is saying is, everybody is worth the same. If a rich man knocks the tooth out of a slave, the only thing he has to do is pay the slave's owner a few bucks. If a slave knocks a rich man's tooth out, the slave dies. God says, "No. No. Everybody is on the same level. Life is My creation, and everyone is treated equally." Chapter 25. The Sabbath year and the Jubilee year, long, long discussion of what you do with the land and property and slaves. What's the basic principle? The land is not yours. Yes, you can have the deed to it, but it is not yours. You hold the land in trust. Now again, I've mentioned to you several times that as I grow older, I think about things my dad used to say. He was a farmer. And he said, "You ought to leave the place better than you found it." You hold it in trust, and in trust, you ought to leave it better than you found it. So the land must be allowed to rest. Forgive me, but that was another thing my dad was committed to, and that was crop rotation. He said, "You plant the same thing every year, and you're going to kill the land." This is this is the underlying principle of that. The land is not yours to rape as you please. The land is a gift. Again, what does that say about holiness? My life is a gift. Your life is a gift. What are you doing with it? The land has to remain in the clan to which it was originally given back in Joshua. And that's basically what the Jubilee year is all about. A lot of things can happen. People can get poor and sell the clan's land, a piece of it, to somebody of another clan. But in the 50th year, back it comes, no matter what the chain of title has been. What's that saying? It's saying, "God owns the land, and He has given it to these people, and it's going to be these people's trust throughout history." The other thing... And I think I I think I only first saw this in preparing this study. The thing that is sort of in common about the poor throughout this chapter is whatever has happened to them, whether they have had to sell themselves into indentured servanthood or whether they've had to sell their land, whatever's happened to them, in the Jubilee year, they get a chance to start over. I've thought a lot about this in recent months. I think I mentioned it last week or two weeks ago when Denise Adams mentioned... when Denise Adams mentioned a woman she was working with who cannot afford to get off the dole. She, if she gets a job, she'll have to give up the food stamps. She'll have to give up subsidized housing. She can't afford to get a job. There's something wrong there. We cannot alleviate poverty. When we try to do that, we mess things up. There's a woman whose novels are not very well-known now. Her name is Janice Holt Giles. She came from Connecticut, I believe, during the Second World War, married a Kentucky boy, and they settled here in southeastern Kentucky. And she wrote a whole series of novels about life in that area. They're very, very much worth reading. Janice Holt Giles. But she talks about what happened to the character of eastern Kentucky when the dole came in. The dole. D-O-L-E. Welfare. But, but we must do everything in our power to alleviate the causes of poverty. That money will be well-spent. And that's basically, I'm convinced, what this chapter is about. Whatever has happened to these people over the years, in the Jubilee year, they get a chance to start over again. Jesus says, "You will always have the poor with you." People whom life is treated badly for one reason or another. But that doesn't mean that we should sit by and allow the causes of poverty to be untreated. We ought to deal with them. Now that's easier said here in this place of quiet and peace than it is done. But it's still, I believe, worth thinking about. Yes?
Your last line up there.
"We can alleviate the causes of poverty."
It causes me to think about, let's say, I am in possession of a certain piece of property, but I'm in the 49th year, and in the 50th year, it's going to go back. I am not to become careless about the use of that property or let it go to pot.
Exactly.
I am responsible for the condition in which I pass it back.
Yes, absolutely.
It's not an excuse to
No.
start becoming a laggard, kind of a
Yes, 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 yes. That's excellent point. That's exactly what is said over and over again in the chapter. Just because you've figured out, hmm, I'm going to lose money on this deal. No, you can't do that. You've got to be responsible right up to the end.
In like manner, the person who knows is going to receive it. Because they're just, no, I'm not going to bother to do anything.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to come back to me. And all of us know some of the causes of poverty are from within. And you're not necessarily going to alleviate those. But, but the responsibility is there. All right, let me try to wrap that up. So in chapters 24 and 25, the perfection of the offerings. They've got to be perfect. The best kind of oil, the best kind of flour. In the sanctifying of Yahweh's name and the sanctifying of human life. In the stewardship of Yahweh's land and provision for the poor. This is holiness. And that's what these chapters are illustrating for us in terms of what's been talked about in the book thus far. Now, I intended to close with a theology of worship, but our time is gone. I'll begin there next Tuesday night, excuse me, next Monday night. And I remind you, next Monday night is the last for this series. So if you have questions or comments or things you want to say about Leviticus other than, "It was really boring." No, not that one. But if you have other things you want to talk about or ask about, please be ready for that next week.